All right, Tony, we are live and recording.
Hey, thank you. We'll call this meeting of the Jamestown City Council Work Session of Monday, February 8th to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
House member Sheldon?
Here.
James?
Here.
Aruba?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Eklund?
Here.
Graham Reinhardt?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
And President Dolez?
Here. Are we going to do the pledge again this week? Should we do that? We can do that. Would you all please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands on, nation, our God. With this will be liberty and justice for all.
With the clerk, is there any correspondence to be read this evening?
There is not.
Okay, thank you. We do have a guest tonight. Journey Gunderson is here from the National Comedy Center. The mayor has asked if he could say a couple of things before we get started, so I'll turn it over to Mayor Sunquist now. So Eddie, go ahead.
Thank you, President Dolez. Hello, everyone. I'm coming to you live from my house. As I had mentioned right before we got started, today officially is my last day of quarantine. So doing better and finally getting ready to get back into business and keep the city moving forward. I do wanted to just say a few things before we begin tonight. Really, first off, just to welcome Journey Gunderson from the National Comedy Center to join us tonight. I know it's been, I was, I chatted with Journey a couple of days ago and she had mentioned the last time she got a chance to come and talk to the council has really been at public safety meetings and other things. So we're really excited to have her here tonight to talk about a whole host of things in regards to the Comedy Center. But before she does that, I want to make sure that we recognize the fact that the Comedy Center, like many of our not-for-profits, are working really hard and diligently during this COVID time. And we appreciate her taking the time out of her day to come and talk to us about the things going on. We are trying as a city to be better partners with all of the not-for-profits and businesses in the city. We may not have always had the best relationship with organizations in the past, but I know it's been a priority of my administration and all the folks here to make sure we are good partners, good stewards with the community. So I am actually really excited to have Journey here because I can't remember the last time she's gotten a chance to, as the Comedy Center, come here, talk to the council, and listen to what you all have to say so that the National Comedy Center can continue to be a partner with the city in the work that we do. It, along with many other businesses, are economic drivers here in the city. Increasing tourism during the good years, increasing sales tax and other things. So the more we can engage with those partners, the better. And so I hope that Journey is the first of many that we can have as a council to talk about the things going on in the community. And I just want to say, Journey, thanks again for joining us and thanks for the work that you do, especially during this tough time.
Well, thank you, Mayor Sunquist, and I really want to thank the council for permitting me to speak here tonight. I'm here voluntarily after watching the meeting last Monday. And what's important here is that I know that you all serve because you care deeply about the city of Jamestown and its constituents and want you to know that so do I, as does the entire National Comedy Center team. And maybe that word is the most important here. You're here because you care about Jamestown. We're here because we care about Jamestown. So we really are all on the same team. And that's the spirit with which I'd like to keep going and proceed. And again, I'm here voluntarily to field any and all questions you have or be responsive to any and all concerns that you have. And so before we get into Q and A or any concerns that you want to express tonight, I just wanted to review some of the concerns that have already been expressed and be as responsive as possible to those. We earnestly believe that it's possible that cultural institutions like ours as nonprofits may have a civic responsibility to serve as a polling site if it can be done without significant hardship to its operations. We're very willing to sit down with the Board of Election Commissioners and work through this. We want to find a way forward and to resolve the polling site issue quickly and amicably and do ultimately what is best for the residents of Ward Three. For context, you know, the National Comedy Center is enormously beneficial to this community. And what I saw in this council's meeting last week was, to be fair to everyone, a genuine and earnest questioning of that. And so I'm here to provide both necessary context and address some inaccuracies that just need to be cleared up before we can go further. So please allow me to share our perspective and then I, again, welcome any questions that you may have. So with regard to the liquor license question and whether that prohibits the Comedy Center from being a polling site, this was a state statute that we discovered recently. We wanted to make sure that our hosting a polling site is legal. We looked into it without any knowledge of the fact that there was a statute about liquor licenses, but only when it became challenged in the press that, you know, per norm green, that our nonprofit status could be at stake. So of course, we're looking into it and we find a statute that says, hey, it's illegal for you to host anyway. We didn't just work from our own interpretation of that statute. We sought clarification on that from the State Board of Elections. They gave us an advisory opinion stating that we are prohibited because of our liquor license. That was on January 28th. We have since now gone back to the State Board of Elections and asked for an official statement from the state indicating that we are, in fact, permitted to host a polling site as long as we do not serve liquor on that day. We're hopeful for a positive outcome on this front. And once again, we, once we're told from the State Board of Elections that we're prohibited from hosting based on a state statute, it's incumbent upon us to not just rely on, you know, hearsay that it's okay to do so as long as the liquor's in another room or as long as you don't serve on that day. Fine, and we are happy to explore returning to being the hosting, the host of the polling location as soon as someone from the State Board of Elections can provide an official statement that that's legal. But again, we're hopeful for a positive outcome on this front. And we have specifically asked if those accommodations could be made if we didn't serve alcohol on that day. Beyond the liquor license issue, serving as a polling site, as we've done five times now since the National Comedy Center opened, does present some challenges for us, none of which were really properly identified in the council work meeting last week. And I think it's important context. Number one, the residents of Ward Three or any ward in our city coming through our doors has never been a problem or concern. That's never been the source of the hardship. We welcome them on voting days and throughout the year. In fact, we sincerely want our neighbors to visit the National Comedy Center throughout the year, which is why we offer a very significant admission discount for local residents and offer a number of free programs and things that I'm happy to continue to discuss here tonight. Second, contrary to what was presented last week, in all candor, the partnership between the local Board of Elections and the National Comedy Center in the five times that we've consistently hosted has been a rocky one. We are likely the only polling site in the county attempting to operate a business side by side with a polling site on premises within the same space. You know, I'm aware that Peak and Peak has been a location for polling, but I don't think anyone would expect that of Peak and Peak during ski season, for example. The June primary date takes place in the midst of our tourism high season. So the November election date takes place as our holiday shopping season begins and the square footage demanded by the Board of Elections does, as a practical matter, severely compromise our ability to maintain retail operations on voting days. Third, the Board of Elections by state law really can't, you know, in their defense, fully abide by our stringent COVID health and safety protocols. Masks per Laugh Safe are a system of health and safety protocols that does give visitors the confidence that a visit to the National Comedy Center in Jamestown is safe. That system requires masks. If a voter enters the polling location and chooses not to wear a face covering, the Board of Elections staff can't refuse entry to that individual. This compromises our Laugh Safe Health and Safety Program and that's a pretty integral part of our brand and communication to the public about making a visit right now. If guests don't feel safe and fully protected at the Comedy Center, then they just won't visit. Fourth, parking was discussed last week and there were certainly some inaccuracies stated there. Visitor parking is, in fact, an issue, absolutely. We read it in our reviews with frequency. Contrary to what was said last week, our visitors do frequently use the metered street parking set aside for the polling site on those days. Parking is always an issue made more challenging on voting days. Now, all of that said, once again, to be clear, we are willing to host polling as long as we can clarify per an official statement from the State Board of Elections that it's legal to do so. The National Comedy Center, you know, we're here to drive economic growth for the city of Jamestown. And there were comments last week about how our focus is on tourists or conjecture that the citizens of Ward Three are made not to feel welcome. And, you know, the fact is, when we bring visitors to Jamestown, we drive economic growth in a way that benefits everyone involved. Our visitors not only visit the Comedy Center, but they eat in our restaurants, they shop in our stores, they stay in our hotels, and they visit other attractions. So those visits throughout the year not only help our small businesses, but deliver incremental sales tax revenue for our city. Now, I know that there may be some who question like, how much sales tax revenue is the Comedy Center delivering? And we've only had one year, one summer of operation, one high season pre-COVID. But that year, in fact, in 2019, Jamestown's sales tax revenue was $600,000 higher than in 2017, which was the last full year before the Comedy Center opened. So that's a 9.9% increase in sales tax revenue, which had to be driven to a large extent by the Comedy Center. So absolutely, we have a focus on bringing in tourists and visitors because one great and direct way to serve the constituents of Jamestown is to directly put hundreds of thousands of real dollars into the city's coffers every year. And that is good for the people of this community who need every dollar of critical resources that we can deliver. Finally, I know this has been a point of discussion and concern. And so again, I'm here voluntarily to address this. With regard to the train station rotunda or concourse, critical context is that but for the Comedy Center, the concourse would cost the city and later, you know, the Gebi Foundation along the way, before we took over the operation of the building, it would cost and did cost approximately $300,000 each year to maintain it, to pay for the utilities, to secure it, to clean it, et cetera. As a practical matter, this was financially unsustainable without bringing in a private entity that drives revenue. Once the National Comedy Center took it over, all of the costs have been borne by us. With regard to public access of the train station concourse, we make that space more accessible to the public than it ever was prior to the National Comedy Center's operation of it. We have actually, again, I'm here to correct and address some inaccuracies expressed last week. There was a comment made that, I shudder even to sort of repeat it, that the Comedy Center deemed constituents of Ward Three, it wasn't my words, but someone on council, not good enough to come through our doors. The opposite is true. The assertion was also made last week and ended up in the press that we don't provide the public access. That is 100% factually inaccurate. And I really think the best way we can serve our constituents is by spreading correct information and not misinformation. So the fact of the matter is that we have increased the access to the concourse to be daily. So it was seven days a week, year-round, free of charge prior to COVID. Now it's five days a week. This is not by paying an admission ticket. This is not by purchasing a thing. This means open to the public who can walk right in every day, and that is the truth. Accordingly, we truly believe we are honoring our obligation in that respect. That being said, we are happy to request confirmation of that and have reached out to Senator Chuck Schumer's office as the liaison to get that clarity from the FTA or the Federal Transportation Authority. So again, I'm happy to field any questions on that, but we're confident that we are fulfilling our obligation. We're providing more access to that space to the public than ever existed before, to the extent that it's daily or near daily now that we're in a pandemic. But we're also happy to seek additional affirmation or clarity or confirmation of what the expectation is there. And to be even more clear, there is zero connection between the history of that funding requirement and serving as a polling location. Those things are not connected. Last, before the pandemic took hold, I just think this is an important perspective to offer. Before this once-in-a-hundred-year pandemic, the travel and tourism industry supported 1 to 10 American jobs. In the past year, 50% of the travel and tourism industry is just gone. It's eliminated. They've lost their jobs. And 30, there are museums closing all over the country right now. So 34 museums nationwide have closed their doors for good due to COVID. This is really hard. It's hard for us. It's hard for everyone involved. And the only way we're going to get through it and be stronger and bring more economic impact and community benefit to Jamestown is to stick together. And we've got to work together for the people of Jamestown. And I believe that everyone in this room wants to do that. And I'm excited about opening up this dialogue and working more closely together hand in hand to avoid, you know, this kind of thing in the future. And I truly am hopeful that this is the start of a new era where we do work together and better serve the constituents of the community because we want to be good neighbors and friends. Before I turn it over to you, I know I've done enough talking here and opened it up to questions. I did want to address the issue of carts because it's come to my attention that that might, the perception might be that that is related here as well. So once the Second Street block was identified, not by the Comedy Center and not by our organization, but by the city and by the Gebi Foundation and per a plan developed by AECOM focused on the revitalization of downtown Jamestown, that planning identified, again, not the Comedy Center, but that planning identified the Second Street block as opportune for downtown events, anyone's events. The project was dubbed a piazza space and grant funding was received, again, not by the Comedy Center, but by the Gebi Foundation, hand in hand with the municipality, with the idea being it's fertile for hosting downtown events. So the idea that as that develops, as events are increasing annually, carts, drop-off and pickup location would be interrupted every time someone hosts a downtown event that involves the street closure of that block, meant that it was not a great long-term home for carts. Certainly to interrupt the service more than a dozen times a year and on an increasing basis as more people program that space, I think the belief was, you know, broader than the National Comedy Center. And we actually were not the entity involved in the relocation of carts. But the, the idea was, you know, and I'm not trying to speak for those who did work together with carts to relocate it, but Greg Edwards from the Gebi Foundation did work with the county to find a new home. The goal there was where is there a long-term, stable, consistent home for carts that will work rather than displacing them dozens of times a year? And again, I'm happy to speak to that issue to the extent that I'm familiar with it. But that is what I know of the issue. And from what I also have learned, the new carts location, being a property now owned as a nonprofit by the county, means there's finally a stable and consistent home for carts that is in good proximity to both the ridership and the services and resources that they seek. And with that, I guess I will just offer that, you know, putting the polling issue aside, we want nothing more than to be good neighbors. And while we feel that we've demonstrated that in a handful of ways, we want to just continue to be better neighbors. So as of now, we have hosted many free public movie nights. Now, just keep in mind, these have an expense for us. This is our staff labor time and resources. There's no corresponding revenue, but we do that to be a good community partner. The plan was to do those twice a month. We did get to a point where we were doing the monthly pre-pandemic and the plan is only to continue doing so. The other point that I thought needed to be made after watching the council meeting last week was that prior to raising the money to build the National Comedy Center, we actually raised the money to create the Green Space Comedy Center Park on the riverside of the Comedy Center. And I know because I wrote the grants, that we worked very hard to pull together grant funding from multiple sources to raise over $1 million just to create a park space for the community of Jamestown that would be accessible via the Downtown and Second Street and would be seated and graded and open green space for the community to enjoy. We didn't have to do that. That didn't really have anything to do with the exhibits within the Comedy Center or the ability to charge admission to a national-scale cultural institution. We did it because we truly want to be good neighbors and we want this project always to benefit the community of Jamestown first. So I know I said a few minutes ago I had talked enough and now I really will listen and I appreciate any discussion and questions that you have for me.
Hi, Journey. Thank you for coming tonight and appreciate your, your comments. And, you know, there was two things that you said that really stuck to me. Perception and displacement. The perception for Ward Three is that it is not a welcoming. The residents, my constituents, do not feel welcome. That is the perception. The truth may be something different, but that is the perception. Then it's, you know, and I don't know, I don't know if perception, communication. I don't know if a lot of people know about your discounts days because I hear that a lot. Can't you do something to make them, you know, give discounts to us? And, you know, again, could be just communication, you know, is that communicated well? Does the people know that? I don't think, you know, it's happening, but so if I'm hearing it, I don't think communication is being communicated well to the community. And I think that would be a great thing because people just don't feel it's in their neighborhood, but it's not for them. You know what I mean? It's not a place where, for them to, you know, they just don't feel welcome because they just don't feel like a part of it. Because, you know, when you look at that beautiful building and it just could be the perception in their head that I can't afford it, you know, just looking at the, looking at it. And I hope that we can clear by tonight, we can clear all this and speak truth instead of, you know, get around the perceptions. And, you know, and then when you talk about the displacement, that's how Ward Three is feeling displaced because we just, it seems like we're just getting flip-flopped. We're moving here, we're moving there, you know? And then we don't know what now with the senses, we're looking at another move. And so when you had, so when you mix the two together, it's not a good feeling. When you mix perception and displacement together, it's just, you know, people feel unwelcome, you know, in your own neighborhood, you know, to feel unwelcome is not a very good feeling. And then, you know, with that said, I just was wondering, why go to the State Board of Elections when the local, so the local election boards, so what, you know, I don't know what the, you know, I don't know if it's a relationship thing. You know, I don't know, do you feel like they, they're not knowledgeable enough? They're not able to give you the right direction? I don't, I don't know what, you know, that's all about. And I can understand the covert and, you know, all that, you know? Because everybody, you know, because me, you know, I'm crazy when it comes to that, you know, my household. And so, you know, how we, we give it much respect. And I know there are some people that don't really, you know, they have different beliefs on that. And so I was just wondering, so you were talking about how if someone came into the polling site without a mask and they wouldn't be able to enforce it, would, do you enforce that within the Comedy Center? So if somebody was to come, you had a group that came and they, you know, half of them didn't have a mask, you know? Do you say you can't enter, you know, what are your, your policies on that? And, you know, so, but I'm just, that perception and that displacement, I just hope that, you know, because I, when I was hearing the things, you know, like I said last week, I don't want to believe that. You know, I don't want to believe that it's because people aren't making 50, 60,000 a year that they're not welcome down there. I don't want to believe that the carts was moved because the people that are having to use the service don't look like the average out-of-town tourist who's coming and planning their vacations all around that and they've got the money to spend. I don't want to believe that, you know? And that's why I was saying, last week, it hurt my heart to even think that it could even be possible, especially when we look at our world today. You know, when we look at the unrest that is going on and we look at the injustices, the systematic injustice, the systematic prejudice things, that I was, would hope that we wouldn't be a part of anything of that. And so, again, I thank you for coming. I, you know, I, you know, would like nothing to hear anything more that you have to say about this. And by the end of the night, I just hope that we're dealing on truths and not perceptions because people can take perceptions and, you know, the mind can go wherever they want to take that. So again, I thank you and that's it. I'm done.
Well, I love the opportunity to respond to that and I thank you for those questions and those are really good questions. So I'll address both of those. I think, starting with your question about why we would go to the state instead of local BOE, number one, because it's a state statute. You know, again, when it's a state statute and a state law that says in no uncertain terms that a liquor license prohibits someone from being a polling place, that's something we take very seriously. We're actually rule followers. So, and we've received, you know, more than 19 different funding sources, including state funds. So by any means, we do not want to screw anything up. And we didn't know that we've been hosting with a liquor license. So that made us rather nervous. So again, we didn't just interpret it ourselves. We sought clarity from the ultimate authority on that, the State Board of Elections. And it's interesting, you know, their response wasn't, well, if it's in a different room, it's okay. Their response wasn't, if you don't serve liquor that day, it's okay. Their response was, yeah, looks like you can't host polling. And so we honestly believed that to be true. It was only after that point that in the community and for the local Board of Elections, there were statements made that, oh, it happened. oh, it happens here and there, you know, there are anecdotal instances of it. That's great. I still need to hear from the same authority who told me it's illegal, that it is now legal so that we can move on. And I'm happy to, to, out of respect for the constituents of Ward Three, return to, to polling, again, despite pretty significant hardship. I also, I, I failed to mention, and I think it's important, what I learned watching the meeting last week was that there is a history of the constituents of Ward Three being bounced around and that is really an important consideration that I admit we were not aware of because we had been, because we were not the source of the inconsistency, because we had been hosting consistently five times, you know, in a row. And so I, I wanted to clear that up for people, that it wasn't as though we were the source of the inconsistency prior to this. And it is a, it is a hardship on the business, but that being said, especially when I learned of the pending redistricting that's, that's coming, that may displace people yet again. It just, it made us want to figure this out and work together. You know, despite the hardship. Oh, and so your second point about the perception and about the displacement. Yes, so our local discount, you know, and an admission ticket for a tourist, somebody from outside of Chautauqua County is twenty-five fifty for the National Comedy Center. The local price is nineteen fifty. It's a deeper discount than you'll see most attractions anywhere offer. That being said, I am fully aware that even in nineteen fifty, that is absolutely cost prohibitive to a large portion of the population. So we are fully aware of that. That's one reason we participate in Free Museum Day. So there is at least one day every year when people can come in for free. And there's no requirement that we have to do that. We choose to do so. And then what we have actually been working on for Q1 were all of the ways that we could get students in the county through our doors, knowing this has been such a hard year for them. And that, you know, positioning these as free family field trips. I wrote a grant proposal to a local foundation for exactly that purpose. And we had been working on, you know, how do we offer this to students? How do we offer this to frontline healthcare workers? What can we do to get more residents through our doors? And, and I guess the silver lining to all this is that that is now, this, now hopefully we can get the message out in a better sense, you know, to your point. So we want nothing more than, than the people of this community to come through the doors. And last, you know, those same students, I, I, it is important to note that our attitude towards schools in this area is that we'll work with any school on what budget you have or don't have to bring your students through our doors. That's what we've done with Jamestown High School and have welcomed a lot of their, their students through our doors. I, I tour them personally. And we want only more of that to happen. And some of these things have only been held back by a lack of staff on our part. You know, they're, they're, it feels like there are not enough hands on deck and we're five, we're five staff down from where we started the year due to the pandemic. So we're doing our best and we want to do more of that and get the word out. And I hope that this whole thing results in more communication. And I hope we get calls from people who say, yeah, I want to bring my students and we'll absolutely work with you to do so. So I think our heart is in the right place, but I would agree with you that the perception may not be there and that maybe we haven't communicated this. Even our, our annual Lucida Ball Comedy Festival, we always make sure that there are free events as part of that program. It's a four or five-day festival welcomes visitors from nearly all fifty states, but every year we make sure there are free events. And the block parties that take place downtown are absolutely free of charge. Nobody has to pay to attend those and listen to the bands that we book. But once again, we can do better and that's what our intention is. So I appreciate and thank you for your comments.
Journey, the only one you didn't answer of hers was the mask question. Sorry.
No, thank you. I appreciate the help. We do require masks. So yes, if a tour bus pulls up, if a tourist arrives, if anybody arrives at the Comedy Center not wearing a mask, they are not permitted into the building. We do temperature checks at the entrance. We have signage outside. Social distancing on the sidewalk as you enter. And it is absolutely our policy that everyone must be wearing a mask at all times in the building. It's not for me to weigh in on that rule as it pertains to voters. But it is accurate to say that it is in conflict with our LAFSA system of health and safety protocols on days when we have tourists in the building, and I shouldn't just say tourists, because we also do get a lot of locals in the building. They are there under the impression that we have given them that masks are required. They're there with the confidence that all of the components of the LAFSA system of health and safety protocols are being adhered to. And so it does fly in the face of that, but again, we're willing to try to, to figure this out.
So how have you handled it? Because I'm sure that it has come up that people have either taken them off, they've entered with and taken them off or pulled them down. We all see it. As much as you try, all the stores, I can't say I've been in any one store where it hasn't happened and a manager has asked someone to put the mask back on. It may even get into an altercation with an individual. So how have you handled it? Because as much as everyone tries, I believe there's probably been times where people refuse and then you have to deal with it. Much like the polling place would try and I realize they cannot refuse, but I think given, you know, the constituents that Councilwoman James has in her ward, I'm fairly certain that they're wearing masks to go into the polling place.
A great question. When it comes to patrons of the Comedy Center, we've been pleasantly surprised that we've had very few issues and I suspect that that could be a result of people don't even know before they plan to come whether we're necessarily open. You know, these days, everything has changed for every business in different phases of different colors that most people are in a nice way, you know, coming to the website before they show up at the doors. And it states very clearly on the website that you cannot enter the Comedy Center without wearing a mask. So I think that that's been one thing that has prevented altercations that might otherwise happen. We did sort of try to bring a sense of humor to it in terms of the up over the nose thing and really keep training our staff on how to really pleasantly engage with somebody and remind them that the mask needs to be over their nose. I don't know for certain whether every voter wore a mask when they came in. You know, it's many, many hours of polling and our staff is pretty spread thin. So it's not as though we put eyes on every single person who came in by any means. But we were told that they can't be required and if someone refuses to wear a mask, the space needs to be completely cleared of anybody else so that that person can vote without a mask on. And then once that person is out of that space, that the cleaning, that cleaning needs to occur and that comes from the Board of Elections staff to our staff. And so, you know, not that I was looking to go down into the weeds that much about what would happen, but that is another way where potentially you've got conflict with the operation that's going on, where you've got museum goers in the final wing trying to enter into what is the gift shop. But, you know, potentially being told, no, you can't leave, you can't exit, you can't come through here because here's what's happening. There's someone without a mask. So it didn't get to that degree on site that we were aware of. But yeah, it's, it's absolutely, you know, a fact to say that it's not, you know, it doesn't really work well with our LAFSA system of health and safety protocols.
Any other questions? Anybody has or?
I have a couple of que, like three questions that I had jotted down, but I wanted to provide some background information first. Some of it is what Mr. Ramondo provided to all of us. I'm going to read some of it. Some of it is, is his language and some of it is legal language that was drafted up in the agreement between the city and the National Comedy Center. On June thirteenth, two thousand fourteen, the city entered into a lease, the National Comedy Center for nineteen point five years on the property. The lease specifically mentioned that the property had been renovated in two thousand and ten to two thousand and twelve with public funding and that there were areas that must remain for the public purposes as a condition of easement. All easements in the file were just for utility purposes. Specifically stated, in the accordance with public funding, the parties agree that the areas designated for the public in the building shall be reserved and used for the operation of a multimodal transportation center. Also it lists further, placed in the lease terms, was the city's rights to enter the property should the funding purposes not be met and rectify the situation should an issue arise. Now, the reason why I bring this up is because I'm, I'm, I'm shifting back to the public use of the space. Because there was federal monies through transportation that were put into this building. It was earmarked that this space would remain open for public transportation. Ms. Gunderson mentioned that people were able to walk in, come in, shop, whatever, but that doesn't necessarily meet the criteria for this public transportation. And the key word is multimodal transportation center. So I looked up the definition of what, what, what multimodal means. And multimodal states characterized by several different modes of activity or occurrence. So the National Comedy Center can say, well, we have tour buses coming in to meet this criteria based on this legal agreement. And I would dispute that if you simply have tour buses coming into your facility that you're not in compliance with this legal agreement. Cause I would beg to differ that that's not a multimodal transportation center. So that leads me to my questions for Ms. Gunderson is, I know Coach USA buses used to stop at the train station on a daily basis to pick up citizens, drop citizens off, tourists, people were coming in from Buffalo or whatever. Now, the question I have is, does this still occur at the train station on a daily basis?
Yes, we, Coach USA continues to operate with that as their pick-up and drop-off location.
Oh, if so, do these citizens have access to say to use the restroom facilities or the rotunda area?
Yes.
Okay. You stated that that carts was displaced not by your choice or your doing, but more of an inconvenience. You didn't want to, you didn't want to see carts inconvenience. Is Coach USA going to become an inconvenience to people? And therefore are they going to be displaced to a different location using the same rationale?
That's a great question. There are differences. One of which is that carts buses, there are multiple carts buses at once that line up, sometimes eleven at a time, most often, you know, a little bit fewer than that. But there are differences to the nature of sort of the space and footprint involved. And right now there's not a plan to ask them to change locations necessarily, but we haven't really been focused on that. Again, because we're sort of navigating a pandemic for the last twelve months and I'm, you know, only saying that to be completely honest. So right now those people do have access and you know, the, yeah, there's not necessarily a plan to change that. Now, if I were Coach USA and came into town and a dozen times a year, there was a street closure, or if I was being notified of a street closure that was going to change the pick-up and drop-off point, which does happen. For example, when people have hosted events there and closed the street, the Coach USA bus, I believe, has dropped people off up on Fifth Street. So I guess I would pose that question to them as to whether they want, you know, to, to continue, knowing that there might be street closures for downtown events or not. But right now we still serve as the point for Coach USA.
Okay. So but in order to maintain the lease agreement, or excuse me, that the lease agreement that ultimately turned into a sale for a dollar. The train station facility has to maintain this multimodal transportation center. I mean, what would the, what would the Comedy Center do in order to, you know, to fit this legal agreement if, if Coach USA decides to pull out? I guess, I, I guess my question is, and maybe more of this is more of a legal question is, is the, the language of, of it being multimodal and not simply just having tour buses come in. I personally don't think that having tour, simply tour buses coming in is, is, is fitting the legal agreement.
Well, number one, that's why we're happy to seek clarity from the FTA themselves. So that's really the most important thing, that we are willing and have reached out and will seek the clarity that you are, yourself are seeking. Number two, I do know that from everything that I've been told about the intention of the restoration of the building, it was with the hope that there would someday be a return to passenger rail service. And that hope is not crazy. I know to some people it may sound crazy, but there are folks involved in trying to establish that connection for passenger rail service between Jamestown and Buffalo. The notion also had to do with connecting that building and the downtown with the waterfront, with the pedestrian Riverwalk and the two, the, the now two pedestrian bridges that connect one side of the Chatacoin to the other. And so that was, you know, that's not me making that up. That, that's was the discussion of that property in that it borders the river, in that it borders the train tracks and but for the access that we've created in the design of the project, it was hard to get to the riverfront from the downtown. Now you can go down and use the park. Now you can access the Riverwalk and now you can access the pedestrian bridges. And to your point, you're absolutely correct that we now welcome thousands of people a year via tour buses in their own vehicles and via Coach USA. But once again, if there's questioning of that, then we're happy to get the clarity.
That, that kind of leads me into my, my next question. And would the National Comedy Center be open to trains coming to the train station for tourism or hosting such events?
Absolutely. I don't think it can happen soon enough.
Okay.
And, and I, yeah, I, please let me know what I can do to help it along.
Councilwoman Russell, could I interrupt for just a minute? Because that's been brought up a number of times about National Train Day, which used to be an event that took place, I think it was the first weekend in May. And a number of people that were involved with that brought in tourists. If that's the intent that the Comedy Center will bring in tourists, likewise, the National Train Day brought in people from all over, including Ohio. And I can't, they gave, and I apologize, I can't remember all the states, but there were many people that were well outside the area. And what they felt was not only did it help bring tourism to, to the Comedy Center, but to the rotunda and the rehabilitation, the historic designation of the train center there. But it would also bring people who might go to the Comedy Center as well and would stay for a couple of days for Train Day as well as to tour the Comedy Center. But I know that has been brought up on many occasions to me from people who said they were told they could no longer do that or hold that event at the train station. So, and I believe it's been at least several, several years now since it's been held, but they did get quite a group of people coming for that event.
That's why I asked the question because I had a constituent call me and was concerned about that and they felt that that, that event was being stifled and not being allowed to take place there anymore.
Yeah, I had a call also regarding that.
I just had, what, my last question was that I kind of jotted down. The train station was listed on the state and national historic register prior to the Comedy Center acquiring it. Do you know if it still is despite the changes by the connector or the hole that was put in the wall to connect the two buildings? Do you know if it still is despite the changes by the connector or the hole that was put in the wall to connect the two buildings? And did anyone notify these entities prior to the construction work being done? And is it still listed on the registers because of the changes to the building?
A great question. Absolutely. We worked hand in hand with SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, and didn't move forward until they had, they approved every part of the plan. So once again, we got permission first. We had them review in detail the architectural plans for how we were going to connect the buildings. And since then, they have stated, I'm paraphrasing, but something to the effect of this embodies an ideal, it might not have been the word ideal, but it was something to that effect. Adaptive reuse and modernization of a historic building. It's like their expression as to how it turned out was that this is exactly what they hope for and have in mind. Is to maintain the integrity of the original historic nature of the structure, but do something in the space that allows it to bring people through and actually be used instead of, you know, potentially sitting shuttered, because once again, it's important for everyone to understand that without a private entity or without a generation of revenue from the space, I don't see someone in this community, an entity like the Gebi Foundation or necessarily the city, looking to spend over $300,000 a year to secure it, maintain it, and open and close it so that people can enter the concourse. So this, you know, we feel it is a good solution that makes great use and makes great access of that concourse.
Okay, and just for clarification for the people that are watching it to rehash, the public use language was strictly for transportation because of the the monies that, federal monies that were secured for for that. So I know some people were confused. They just thought it was for general, but it was specifically there's legal language in there that talks about for transportation. Those are all the questions I have, and I just, I appreciate you you fielding those.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any specific?
I just want to make a comment. Earlier today, Journey and I had a very productive conversation, so I do want to thank her for coming. And really, from this point forward, we didn't really talk about the polling station per se. But we kind of addressed more of Vicki's concerns with regard to perception and reality. And I believe that, you know, our conversation was good and that moving forward, engagement with the community and hearing community voices and getting feedback and intentional outreach, even though there were probably programs already available, is going to be part of some of the strategic planning that they're doing. And so I did say to Journey, you know, COVID just kind of put you guys in the hot seat, I think. I think it's something that's happening across the country that other organizations really need to be intentional about when they start thinking about public and community relations. And so, Journey, thank you for the conversation today. And hopefully, moving forward, we can find ways to really engage the public in a way that everyone feels welcome and included. So thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for saying that, and I couldn't agree more. We've got to get the message out that everybody's welcome. And while I've always felt that, what I've learned is that the perception may be maybe otherwise. And so, yes, we'll do what we can to make it a proactive part of all strategic planning and communicate it well to this community.
I'd just like to add one other comment too, and maybe to tie in with what Councilman Russell has already said. The displacement of carts, which normally operates between 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM with most of the events occurring at night, would probably not have been that big a hardship. However, the relocation of carts to the location across from City Hall did take a piece of taxable property off the tax rolls. So where the multimodal transportation system at the where the Comedy Center is located resulted in a taxable piece of property coming off the tax rolls. So it does impact the city financially in terms of where it is located. It may have been. And to the other point about the buses waiting, I have been told by numerous carts drivers that they are not allowed to idle. They cannot park in front of the location, that they are to go somewhere else and then move to the location for pickup right before the pickup time. They are not allowed to sit and stand on a city street anywhere. They have to go to another location. So I don't think there would ever be an occasion where there would be 11 carts vehicles idling, nor could they idle at the location on Third Street. There isn't enough room for 11 vehicles to idle or sit. So I think they coordinate that to prevent that from occurring.
Right. Yes, and I'm glad you brought that up because I want to be really clear that, you know, I'm in no way asserting that, you know, they often have that many vehicles, nor that it was, you know, the thing that made it problematic by any means. We tried to be really good hosts during the time that we were the location. And I also have understood that that this has been an issue for carts for decades, finding a location in Jamestown that would work out. And so while it is true what you say that the the property is now a nonprofit, at least the ridership has a long term and stable home for carts that is really centrally located. And I think that's incredibly important. And I hope to bring more people to Jamestown to help make up for that in terms of the incremental sales tax revenue. You know, even though it was a $600,000 increase in 2019 over 2017, that was our first year. So my hope is that that will double and triple and and help fund a good portion of of the city budget. And I hope we can revitalize Jamestown together in a way that's taking into consideration the entirety of the population.
As you raised that question and brought it up in your presentation, where did you arrive at? Do you, are you attributing the entire $600,000 in sales tax to the Comedy Center? Because you do do online sales. I know I get your your sales literature in my inbox quite often. So I'm guessing, I'm asking, is that strictly the $600,000 you believe is entirely due to the Comedy Center?
Uh, no, I understand that that's something that when it's in the form of sales tax revenue, it's not as though you can prove, okay, this is exactly the incremental, this is the business that drove that. But for anyone who might question what the cause is of the incremental sales tax revenue, cut it in half, you know, and it's still a wonderful thing for Jamestown. So no matter how you slice it, it's a positive. And that $600,000 did not come from our books. That's from city sales tax revenues, Joe Belito and others. That's from third party sources. That's not our own revenues. And you know, that impact, just to be clear, in the form of sales tax revenue is in addition to the impact that comes in the form of us every time, you know, it's a nonprofit. So nobody's getting rich off this. There isn't a business owner that is enriched with the success of the Comedy Center, quite the contrary. The second we have the resources to do so, we hire more people. We pay those people. Those people eat lunch downtown. They buy coffee at Crown Street. They go to the pub. I think the local business owners are really dependent on this thing, you know, succeeding. And that's also the incremental sales tax revenues in addition to the economic impact that we have in the form of expenses we pay to the local vendors every time we do a new event or program. And I hope I've answered that question in a straightforward manner.
Thank you.
I just have one more thing, Journey. I was just wondering, I mean, you're not in the only boat that I'm thinking about this. Because I know at City Hall, we're trying to to do our own housekeeping here also. But I was just kind of wondering, how many people of color do you have in your organization? You know, how many, you know, are there any Spanish speaking? You know, like I said, you're not the only organization that, you know, that that needs to work on this area. You know, like I said, you know, even that City Hall where, you know, through the police department, the fire department and other departments. You know, everybody, you know, has that on their radar and on their site and trying to do better. So I was just kind of curious where your organization was was on that.
Yeah, I would say that the status of our organization is that we have work to do. Absolutely. We've made forward motion in adding diversity to our board, both our local board and our national board. One thing that we realized, again, in in looking very hard internally at the way we operate and how we responsive we are to issues of DEI or diversity, equity, accessibility and inclusion, was, for example, that our internship program that welcomes 10 to 12 interns every year is unpaid. Well, that means that that program is pretty much accessible to people of privilege. And that that creates a barrier. And a lot of our staff is hired from the internship program. So trying to get at the root of the issue, we made the decision this year to create a stipend for the program to make it more accessible to anyone regardless of socioeconomic status. We also have been reaching out to HBCUs, historically black colleges and universities to say to them, okay, here are the departments we have needs for, museum studies, archives, PR, communications, marketing, preservation, you name it. You know, do you have coursework and programs that are that are synergistic with that? And in as part of that process, we've also decided that we need to potentially change those into fellowships instead of internships where they're paid. But I also say that knowing that there remains a lot of work to be done. But I really want to wholeheartedly express that looking at things through the lens of DEI, diversity, equity, accessibility and inclusion has now become a part of every conversation we have with regard to strategic planning because we really need to to address this, much like most organizations in the country and probably globally.
Thank you.
I just want to make it, I'm sorry, I'm a bean counter by trade, Journey, so I'm going to go back to that tax, sales tax revenue. Just just to clarify for the public, nothing against you, believe me, I'm very grateful for the impact that the Comedy Center brings into the sales tax. And there's no doubt that it's 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 a huge part. But there's also been changes in sales tax allocation and that we now collect from online sales and some other things that have also increased that. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that council is aware of that, that, you know, 2020 really honestly surprised us all with the sales tax numbers. So I think there's a lot of craziness going on in the sales tax and the allocation. So while I appreciate it and and recognize what the Comedy Center does, and believe me, I did a lot of Christmas shopping there this year. There are other things that are going on there.
Yes, and thank you for saying that. I I I hear you loudly and clearly.
Okay. Anything else? I'd like to kind of wrap this up and move on. I just to kind of conclude the discussion tonight. It's been an hour now. And I I think the silver lining in all of this, it started obviously with a situation with a polling place, and hopefully, we can get that resolved. You know, Journey and I have spoken, what, three times, I think, on the phone in the last week. We talked about the perception issues. I, you know, she's reached out to some of the council people. And I think, you know, the silver lining in this is is a discussion as to what has occurred and what can can be done to improve that. And what can we do to, as I've mentioned to her, you know, the Comedy Center is is great for Jamestown and and we we want to partner with them. We want this to be a positive situation for them and for the city of Jamestown, both financially and and and, you know, just from a standpoint of community building. And I think tonight goes a long way with that. I think the communication that that Journey's had with some of the council people and the questions that have been asked and their their ability to reach out and try to solve the initial problem with the polling place. We hope that works out. I know that she's waiting for, they're waiting for a response from the state board that hopefully will allow that to occur. As well as some of the other issues that were brought up and the work that that they have to do and and reaching out and and communicating better. So with the public and with Jamestown. So again, I want to thank Journey. I want to thank you for coming, for discussing all these issues with me and with other council people. And, you know, we we look forward to moving on in the future and working with you and with the Comedy Center for the betterment, everybody, for this Comedy Center, for Jamestown, for our residents. And and, you know, we look forward to hearing from from you about the the outcome of the polling place and the voting site. So with that, if there's nothing else, I just, you know, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for allowing me to to have this dialogue with you all. And thank you all for what you're all doing for Jamestown as you continue to do even more work tonight to that end. So thank you all for what you do. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye bye now.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will move on to our standing committees and Councilwoman Eklund and the Finance Committee.
Thank you very much. We really only have one resolution that was prefiled, but we had two issues that we need to talk about that were brought up tonight today by Ryan that I feel need to be addressed right away. So they fall under the New Business of Finance or Informational Report as well. But the first resolution that we have is a resolution suspending the hiring freeze and authorizing the filling of one full time police officer in the Jamestown Police Department. And that this funding was included in the 2021 budget and it was due to a retirement. Questions? Anything else? I'm gonna just give a brief overview on the two new resolutions, but I'm going to let Ryan talk about them. The first one that we will be talking about, this is just a discussion of a utility vehicle that is needed in the Parks Department. And the second resolution is changes to the Smart Tourism Transportation Project. Ryan, the floor is yours.
Yeah, so so the first resolution in regards to the parking, the utility vehicle for the Parks Department. We do have additional funding left over in the equipment budget in the Parks Department for 2020. And so we we thought it would make sense at this point to replace or purchase this utility vehicle. And Pat, I don't know if you have anything else you want to add from that perspective on the Gator?
No, pretty much just that's a, that's an essential piece for the parks, especially for caretaking. When you consider the size of Allen and Bergman Park, they they really use those a lot.
What is it?
It's it's the the trade name is actually called a Gator made by John Deere. Basically like an XUV, you know, fancy four wheeler.
Are we getting it from John Deere? Are we getting it from another company?
It is coming from John Deere, yes.
Does that fall in line with your ability to repair these vehicles?
Yes.
This is just a newer version of what you have. Am I correct, Pat?
Yeah, that is correct. This is just.
And and the cost of this is around $17,062.
Is it for Allen?
I'm I'm not sure if this one's for Allen or for Bergman at this point. I'd have to look into that. I can let you know.
Just because you mentioned the guy at Allen was using his lawnmower to move everything around. So I just want to make sure they were going to get something.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the reasons why we we have these vehicles is it's just they they come in very handy for the different types of work other than lawn lawns.
Is it coming from Down and Faulkner?
Yes, it will ultimately, yes.
Okay.
Can I, can I just point one thing out? I really would appreciate if the Public Works Committee could have some like a heads up on this. This is the first I've heard of it. I know everything goes through finance and I understand that because these things cost money.
We actually just got it late this afternoon, Tom.
Okay, I realize that. And it's part of it is just the situation we're in where we normally would meet as a public works committee and down the hall from public finance and it would, you know, come together was, I kind of miss those days.
Just to add on to that, as Councilwoman Eklund is pointing out, I actually haven't seen sign off on these resolutions yet, but I know that Ryan had asked that we consider those for new business. So we are bringing those up, but it will go, it will go to you once I get the final information and we can put everything together in proper staff report format.
Thank you.
Apologize for being sick and it's not your normal format.
No, I know.
And the the second resolution that Councilwoman Eklund brought up is some additional construction inspection and support costs related to the Smart Tourism Transportation Project. The the total cost is $36,463. We would propose to amend the 2020 budget and pull those funds out of contingency in order to get this paid. And I think Jeff can can fill in the council and give a little more detail on this at this point.
Yeah, this is the inspection portion of the Smart Tourism. Again, the meters and the signage for downtown. Originally, we were going to do this in-house. We had planned to do it in-house. And looking at it because of all the federal funding involved, it's it's a lot different than what we would typically do. And we just felt that it made a lot more sense to to have the consultant work this through for us.
And and we do still have 251,000 remaining in the contingency balance for 2020.
Ryan, I think it would be helpful as well for everybody to get that backup of that. I mean, I didn't really have a lot of time to read through all that, but I know there's some information that would ask some questions and and they may read it and have some more. But I think it would help people to understand what exactly Jeff is referring to when you're talking about here.
Councilman Bracken, we'll make sure that we get everyone a full staff report with background information prior to the, we'll try to get it to you this week so that y'all can take a look at it, ask relevant questions. We just didn't want it to be a surprise under new business, but we'll get it to you all this week with additional information.
Thank you.
I just have one, the new meters, is it because they're solar that there's an issue? Because I thought, I don't know, but I knew the originals were solar. Was that part of it?
No, not at all.
No? Were the the original meter supposed to be solar powered?
No.
No? Okay.
Anything else for finance?
That would be all. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on. I know housing has a presentation tonight, so Councilwoman James, if you wanted to take that.
Great. Thank you. It's nice to be back on the agenda. And so we have no resolutions in it. It's like you said, this is some information and we would like to put out. And it's something that we talked with with Crystal. I'm going to be doing this every second work session of the month. And so I'm going to turn it over to Crystal as we talk about reporting on how the Citizens Advisory Committee will be will be the process for putting it together.
Thank you. So we are still in the process of developing what the final rollout for the advisory committee will be. It will be an ad hoc committee. And I I think that we hope to be able to roll it out within, I would say, by the next meeting of this kind, so by the second work session of March. It'll be a simple application. We're looking at seven to nine people to fill the advisory committee roles. It will be made up of citizens, homeowners, landlords, tenants. We'll look at also involving folks who participate in neighborhood watch groups, other community organizations, a code enforcement officer. We'll also look at working with JPD and having their participation. And like I said, the details are still in process. We haven't written the bylaws at this point. But we'll look at probably as we get rolling, meeting somewhat regularly until we really kind of get our our feet beneath us and have a direction. The focus, I we talked about this with the Housing Committee when we met. Really looking to this Citizen Advisory Board to help us develop a strategy to implement the analysis of impediments to fair housing and the sort of the corrective actions, I guess, if you will, that address those impediments. And also helping us as we progress with our consolidated action plan strategy and annual action plan each year. So there's a lot more to come on that and I actually have a lot more to to go over with everyone. So if you have any questions, feel free to to let me know. Any questions before I move on? Okay. So I was asked to give everyone sort of an update on a couple of things. So each work session, we will report on demolitions. And I'm just thinking a simple overview, what demolitions we have in the queue, anything that might be new coming up, open cases, closed cases and successful cases. An update on the the tenant rental housing utility grants, home and rental rehab projects and any additional grant updates, which we don't have any of those currently. We have some that are not housing related, but that we have submitted three grants in the past couple of months. So as far as demolitions go, we have 14, 15, 16, sorry, 16 on our list that are in some phase of being completed. Some of them have had their asbestos surveys, are in process with abatement being completed and are getting ready to be bid out for completion. I sent everyone an email earlier today. I don't know if you want to ask any questions on any specific properties. I'm happy to to answer any specific questions. No? Okay. So we also are looking at getting an update from the land bank. So they have some funds that are yet to be expended. Each year, there has typically been a auction. And unfortunately, last year, that auction did not occur with the county. We are hoping that it will occur this year, but we have still not heard anything. So it's just kind of take it as it comes. We will keep you, I guess, updated on that. We we certainly have enough in the queue to keep us busy for a while. And we are waiting on our approval from HUD for $100,000 in our annual action plan to go towards demolitions. As far as our active cases, we currently have so I did this based on just year to date. So as of January 1st, between January 1st and today, we have 28 new cases that code enforcement officers have been assigned. There are 361 ongoing cases. So basically, that's just cases that have not been closed out for whatever reason. The current caseload is 389. And that's pretty typical for this time of year. Cases are usually right around the 400 to 450 range. Completed cases since January 1st, 39, 37 new inspections, 142 re-inspections. So that's just since January 1st. Total inspections since January 1st, 179. Any questions so far? Okay, so here's the fun stuff. With all of the CARES Act funding, we actually granted 528,700 in small business relief grants in round one. That was went to 27 different business recipients. Rental assistance, we granted $71,300 to a total of 20 recipients. In round two, to date, we are at 60 utility assistance grants for a total of 60,000. We have $100,000 allocated for that. Small business relief grants for round two, 11 recipients for a total of $157,000. And in total, we have awarded $857,000 in CARES Act funding. Rehab projects, right now, we have one active community housing development organization project with CRIC. And that's actually getting ready to be closed out at 179 Linwood. We are also working to receive our, we have two Totos. That's CRIC and Code. They will be recertifying for the 2020 program year. We have two active emergency repair projects, one that's ready to close out. We have one active rehab project on North Main Street. We have two exterior rehab projects getting ready to close out. One that's active and then we have one that's lined up and these are for rental rehab. And then we have 10 active home program or home program projects right now. And we are actually working through, we had 55 55 households on the waiting list for home projects. We are working through those right now. They date back for several years. So we're we're looking at the way that that has historically been done through our department and looking at better ways that we can do that so that we can get through projects quicker. And you know, have a bigger impact, I guess, and and spend our HUD dollars faster. So a couple of projects that I just wanted to highlight. They're both home projects, 117 Westcott Street. And I shared some photos with you. Total money spent on this project, $35,665. This was to install 16 vinyl replacement windows, three cellar windows, installed a new trim and doors, vinyl siding, a complete roof tear off and replacement to the main roof and porches, gutters and downspouts, replacement of the deck and railings and electrical outlets in the kitchen. Some vent fan in the bathroom and installing smoke and CO2 detectors. So it's quite a bit of investment. Lot of, you know, the photos are are great.
Crystal, do you know if there was lead paint that was remediated at that address?
Um, I would assume so, Brett. We we test for lead paint with every single project. Before we started, that's the very first thing that we do. I can find out for sure, but I I would imagine so with all the doors and windows that were replaced. I would I would think that those probably all were were lead.
Thank you.
Yep. And then the next one is 122 Park Street. And these these projects are both just about ready to close out. They just need a final punch list. This project investment was $49,550. Similarly, vinyl siding, sofa, sofa and fascia, window, door, window and door build out wrap, porch repairs, back porch stair railing, the main roof, porch roofs. There's a rubber roof, also garage siding, garage, whoops, window, door, build out wrap and the garage sofa and fascia. So and if you can see the pictures, it was really quite a transformation. And again, I would imagine, I'll confirm that there was lead abatement done, but there there almost always is.
Does that hear that there were lead reports done and?
Yeah.
Completed.
Yeah, and they will test. It's one of the first things that they do is they test for lead and then it's also one of the last things that they do, so. Happy to answer any questions? Okay.
Pictures a little great.
Thank you, Crystal. Your your department does so much. We thank you. Especially during this pandemic. You know, that's it's amazing that we were able to help so many businesses and residents with those two programs. If there's nothing else, that's that's it for us, Mr. President.
I just have a quick question. Crystal, is there any money left for constituents that might need help?
CARES Act funding, you mean?
Yes.
There's not.
All right, thank you.
I'm Grant. Let me just clarify. I apologize. We do have $100,000 total set aside. I lost you on my screen. I'm sorry.
Utilities?
That's for utilities, correct. So we we have $100,000 set aside for utility assistance. We still have $40,000 left in that.
Well, and there's there's a lot of people that are going to realize that it's going to come due pretty soon here. So I think it's good to keep a little extra around.
Anything else for housing? Not, we'll move on to public safety and Councilman Sheldon, we have a report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have the same resolution that Finance had, suspending the hiring freeze and authorizing the finding one full-time police officer. The next resolution is authorizing the Board of Public Utilities to install one 150 watt LED equivalent fixture on pole number BPU pole 33235 on Potter's Alley.
If I could just comment on that for a minute, Mr. Sheldon. I was contacted by a couple businesses that backside of their buildings are on Potter's Alley. They were concerned about how dark it is back there. There is there is a light further at the top of the hill at the the alley, but it's really not sufficient for the for the alley. They said that they've witnessed people, in their words, said using narcotics back there. They're concerned because their employees often exit and enter the the backside of their buildings and they're just concerned about it from a safety standpoint. I will add that this, obviously, there's a pole right there close to mid mid block and there's a transformer there. So it's it's just a matter of connecting a light up to that. But also I also wanted to ask Resolution Number Three, I just wanted to ask the Chief, Chief Jackson. when his intent was to fill this position, how long would that be?
Well, we have 45 days from the date that the officer retired. And he just came off the books. Don't quote me within the past three weeks.
This is for Officer Raider that retired, correct?
That is actually for, no, that's for Officer Couple.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Item for discussion. I have a request to the BPU to place two streetlights along Marvin Parkway between North Main Street and Lakeview Avenue. There are a couple of streetlights close to North Main Street and then there's one right at the corner of Lakeview, but it's in between there. It's very dark. There's no sidewalks. A lot of our residents walk the streets there. A lot of them work at some of the businesses in North Main Street and it's been a dangerous area. I witnessed a worker from Bob Evans walking there just last week. And with the snow on the sides of the road there, the people are actually walking in the road. So it's, it's very dangerous area. However, the poles that are along the street there were installed by DFT. Put their fiber optic line in about a year ago or so was. It's kind of problematic in that they installed rather short poles. Shorter than the BPU usually uses to put their lights on. If they could put lights on, they would have to move the fiber optic line down the pole. At an expense to us. There's also a tree trimming expenses involved. Which was estimated at about $1,500. There's pole attachment fees involved. And something called a facilities charge. Forty to $45 per month. So this, this request is at the estimate to put these two lights in, which I suggested they move a couple of lights to save money. Is it a lot higher than usually the cost for installing new lights there? But I'm not sure what the pleasure the council is at this point. You know, the cost was the $1,000 to move the fiber optic lines down the poles.
Maybe me, maybe Marie and I could find out some more information about this.
We've already, I've, we've, I've been dealing with this with Dave Leather. So he put this all out there. They've
Okay.
discussing this for quite a while. He wanted to hit, his concern was, see, part of the problem is, is that Marvin Parkway splits halfway down the middle between the town of Ellicott and the city of Jamestown. So on the Ellicott side, we have no control over the lights on that side of the street. So on the cemetery side is what Councilman Sheldon is talking about. So Dave's concern was that because of the short poles and because of the fiber optics line, this is going to be a little more expensive, a little more intricate situation to put lights on that side of the street. Because as you know, I mean, the, where the cemetery is there, you know, it's kind of a black hole at night because there aren't, there aren't any lights in the cemetery. And there's far and few between actually on the perimeter on the outside. So any of the lights that are there now are either down the street on either side. So there was this kind of like dark spot. So Brent, what was the total amount? Again, I don't have it on front of me.
The initial cost was about $2,500. And then there's annual costs, $120 per year and then 40 to $45 for facility charge plus the normal charges for the streetlight that we pay every year.
That would be normal no matter where we put the lights up.
Correct.
So I guess the, the question would be, is there any way we can get that information emailed to the rest of the council so they have that? So we could discuss that or look at it. And then if people have any concerns or questions, otherwise, you know, if it's that much of a deal that people won't want to spend that kind of money, then we won't put it up as a resolution. Otherwise, if people are okay with it, you know, then, then we can have it prefiled and have a resolution just like we would for any of the other streetlight requests.
Yeah, I can either forward it on. I don't know if, to see.
The other thing I would suggest is that if, if people want to, you know, get a chance to do a, a drive by and look at nighttime to see where we're actually talking about between Maine and Lakeview, the two, that section on the cemetery side. Across the street from the Bob Evans side.
It's always been very dark down there.
Yeah. There's no, there's no sidewalks. And there are, there's a lot of people walking and running and, and actually see people pushing baby strollers and riding bikes and in the summer.
Walking dogs.
Walking dogs. And it is, and, and people do drive faster than, you know, than they probably should in that.
Right. This, the email was copied to the mayor and Liam Jordan of the clerk's office.
Okay.
Was actually sent to a email address I don't usually use. So if maybe the mayor or man could forward that to the rest.
I have the, either Jen or the mayor can have that forwarded to the rest of the council so they can review it. And then if they have any questions or comments or concerns and we'll know in two weeks whether or not we have enough support to move forward with that.
We'll email it over President Dulce tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Um, I just was wondering, um, when I talked about last week, we mentioned about the pole on Livingston Avenue. And I think Jen, Jen, you said that they were rearranging the lights, kind of moving the lights around there. I was just wondering, did that happen? Is that's what happened? Did they move the lights around?
That, that was the response that we got was that they were planning to do that. But we can follow up with them tomorrow on that to see if that's happened yet.
Okay, thank you.
I haven't gotten confirmation either way on it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that's all I have from public safety tonight.
Very good. Thank you. We'll move on. I know there doesn't seem like there's anything for Public Works, but Councilman.
Mister, well, Mr. President, could I just mention one, a couple of things here? You know, since, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate place to do it, but since I was appointed to be the chairman of the Deer Population Control Committee, Ad Hoc Committee, I've been flooded with phone calls and, and then tonight I met with a gentleman, Mr. Samuel Senna, who lives on Camp Street. And I, he gave me a letter and I really, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I do want to highlight some points that he made. And I think they're important. First, man has, he's 86. He's lived in his, in his, at his address at 365 Camp Street since 1955. And he owns about two acres of land. And, you know, we've talked about this before. We've talked about the fact that, oh, it's a few bushes or somebody's flowers. Well, I mean, it, the damage that the deer have done, I think it's quite extensive in his case. You know, he, he gave me a list of, of, you know, a garden and apple trees, pear trees, cherry trees, peach tree, rows of blackberries, red raspberries. It goes on and on, the, the amount of damage that the deer have done, that they've wiped out. And he's really noticed it in the past few years, you know, again, he's lived since 1960 or 1955, he's lived in that same address. And so there's that damage. And then he's estimated that he spent over $500 in fencing. And, you know, this is again, an example of, I think, just the, the fact that we need a deer control plan for the city. And I'm continuing to do research on what other cities are doing and to try to come up an answer to this. But I spoke to him and his wife tonight for a while and he, he said, please, you know, tell the council about the damage to my property and, and read the letter. And so I wanted to make sure that I did that. And, and again, we'll, we'll keep working on this. We're looking for solutions. I'm looking at other cities and what they're doing and to try to come up with a plan.
You know, I just wanted to make a comment. You know, I went to Farm Fresh today and it just, looking down there where the trees have been removed was this like, oh, you know, such an open space, but you know, such a sad thing, but a necessary thing. But yeah, it was a different kind of view.
I appreciate your comments, Councilwoman James. I drive through that at least four times, sometimes six times a day. And it is, it's sad and it's hard to believe how far you can see without the trees gone. And I did get one caller, since you brought up constituents, one call who, you know, obviously was not pleased with it, but explained and expressed the concern we had for the safety of everyone living there, driving through there. And that our arborist Dan Stone would not take any tree down before its time. It's very clear how much he cares. So it's very painful, though it's going to be a long time before the pain subsides for people who live on that side of town to have to see that and just see the, the stumps up through the snow. It's very, very disheartening right now, but we'll deal with it. We'll get through it and it'll come back bigger and better, I'm sure, in terms of once the new trees are planted.
Works. If not, is there anything else for new business before we turn it over to the mayor? Anybody else have anything? Not mayor, it's your turn for some remarks and the floor is yours.
Fantastic. So just for the members of council, I do have one item for executive session, which is in relation to active litigation. But tonight, I know you guys have been hearing from a lot of folks. I'm sorry, we're not getting you out early, but we will tonight. My only remarks are to allow our police, fire and comptroller to briefly present their achievements for 2020 and a brief remarks on goals for 2021. So just continuing with that, with those presentations. So with that, I will, I'll turn it over to Zach, who I think is going to be sharing the screen. And we'll start with our police department. Tim, you there?
Yep. Thank you. Okay, our first accomplishment was our renewed collaboration with the sheriff's department. And what that has allowed us to do is investigate and hold those accountable for the trafficking of narcotics in and outside of city lines, because many of our dealers obviously have ties outside the city. So that collaboration has really helped us in our investigations. The sheriff's office obviously knows the area better outside the city and the people. So that is a big, it's a big deal for the police department. We also created our community resource officer, Matt Reinhardt. And he will allow us to meet several of our goals for 2021. Including getting New York State accredited, more community engagement efforts, revitalizing the neighborhood watch, in educating the public on becoming a police officer. And before I forget, I want to mention for the public, the next exam for police officer was just announced and that will be May 15th, May 15th of this year. And I believe it opens February 24th. Next slide, please. Last year, we also greatly increased our beat patrols. We walked the beat over 400 times and that was a result of the input from the community wanting to see officers walking the beat more. We did quite a bit more of those, 400 times is a lot. We do them. Anytime we have the opportunity and we have the manpower, we try to get officers out of the cars. And of course, that's weather dependent as well. So our goals for 2021. The citizens police academy. That is a major, allows us to have open dialogue with the citizens. They will get a inside look as to how the police train, some of the methods used to train the police. And like I've said before, it allows the police to learn from the community and the community to learn from the police. So that is a, one of my, if not the biggest goal for 2021. Next. Our youth mentoring program right now, actually, one of our mentors is meeting with parents to get that started. We have everything in place. It's, we're gearing it towards middle school and high school kids. It's going to allow officers to have a positive impact on the youth. And it puts officers in an opportune position to influence the youth. And not only that, but it also may lead to in a child wanting to be a police officer in the future. So there's a lot of benefits to the mentoring program. And finally, we are on track to complete our reform initiative from the governor. I believe the stakeholder meetings are all completed and we are putting together a plan and meeting regularly to do that. So I believe and I've always believed we will meet the April 1st deadline, which is very important. And I think we're going to do, we're way ahead of the game. And I see no issues with that.
Great. Thank you, Chief Jackson. I do want to just point out one thing that we as a city have been working very closely with the New York State Mentoring Program as well as Chautauqua Striders. And the chief and his team were part of a webinar that I put on with the state on mentoring. And I know many of you, so I know some of you, some of our council members have been longstanding mentors as well and got a chance to speak at that. But it was great to hear that the, the chief and his officers, after seeing that, were interested in starting a mentorship program. And the fact that we have seven officers already getting prepared to mentor students, especially those that are interested in police careers is a really incredible thing. So thank you, Chief Jackson, and for going over those things with us.
Thank you.
Can I just make a quick statement about that? As you referenced there, I'm a firm, very strong believer in mentoring and I'm glad to see that program go off. But I also wanted to mention, I had a very good conversation with Officer Reinhardt about Neighborhood Watch. And those that do know me know that that is also very near and dear to me is what really started some of my strong community engagement years ago. But I, I really want the public to encourage and be proactive with the police department's social media pages and their press releases, because there's a lot of vital information about Neighborhood Watch, how to start one. And I do recognize the work that the chief and Officer Reinhardt have put into reinventing that wheel and trying to reestablish it. And I look forward to working with them to get that going.
Thank you.
Councilmember Eclin, that's absolutely, you're correct on that one. We've been working very hard on some of the neighborhood watches and we're hoping to get those back up and running. So we'll turn it over to Deputy Fire Chief Matt Kuhn. Let's talk a little bit about fire.
Thank you, Mayor Sunquist. Good evening, fellow citizens and council members. Just want to go over a few accomplishments that we did in 2020 and give you a little glimpse of our vision going into 2021. Probably the largest thing that we negotiated last year was the agreement with All-Star to provide emergency medical transports to our citizens. As you guys know, EMS is a very large chunk of our department's business these days. Transports for ambulance one alone accounted for 18% of our calls. We finished 200 calls last year above where we did in 2019 for a total of 1,292 ambulance one transports. That's a 21% increase over 2019. On a whole, All-Star has been a very longstanding partner with us when it comes to the provision of emergency medical care. I can't stress enough how invaluable that is for our citizenry and our two-tiered response model that we've employed with great success for many years. All-Star is a local business partner. They have a vested interest in the community. Their vision aligns with ours. We want to provide the citizenry with the highest quality emergency medical care that's available in our area. the highest quality emergency medical care, um, that's available in our area. And we seek to partner with them going into the future, uh, for a long time to come and to ensure that that delivery process is still going to take place. Um, All-Star's been in the ambulance business since 1983. Jamestown Fire Department historically has partnered with a third party to provide ambulance transports and then we use our ambulance as a supplemental when they're not available. That being said, there are some gaps sometimes in the system where we have more calls than resources to handle them. And All-Star has committed with us that they're going to work to grow their staff to try to address those gaps. But at no point ever has anybody had to not receive an ambulance. One will always be provided. That's also aligns with the fire department's mission, uh, to provide that, uh, life-saving emergency medical care. As part of our agreement with All-Star, um, they're going to assist us with transitioning to a billing, uh, platform. That's going to help to, uh, provide for a little bit of cost recovery for the service that we do provide. Certainly not going to be a cost neutral venture, but it is something that the fire department does wish to provide and we wish to just recover a portion of the cost for providing the service. Again, it also aligns with our, our mission statement and our commitment to the citizens of Jamestown, that we want to provide the best, highest quality emergency medical care and efficient transport that our citizens expect and demand from their part. Next slide, please. Okay. In conjunction with providing emergency medical care. And again, like I previously mentioned, there are occasionally gaps in the service, uh, where ambulance one is put into, is put on the road to provide transportation by fire department personnel. Jamestown Fire Department does not provide, um, paramedic level emergency medical care. Um, and we felt that there was a gap there that needed to be addressed and the county does provide, uh, paramedic level care. So we did negotiate a shared services agreement for the county to provide that advanced life support, care in conjunction with the personnel, uh, in the ambulance from the fire department. Uh, again, it's provided only when All-Star is not available. This is not a competing agency. It's in conjunction with providing care when All-Star is just not available to do it. Um, one of the other advantages to signing a shared services agreement with the county to do this is that it's automatic aid. There's no delays in it. It's not something that's specifically requested by the crew that's responding in ambulance one. If it's determined when they arrive at a scene that advanced life support is not needed, that resource then can be, uh, sent back to its home station and made available to another resident that may also need that. Part of the other big thing about it though is that, uh, the level of care that All-Star provides to the paramedic and the highest advanced life support level, the county is also able to do that in conjunction with us. So again, there are no gaps in the service. Uh, the citizens that do receive care through Jamestown Fire Department receive the same level of care as they would, as if it were provided from All-Star ambulance. And again, uh, we're, it aligns with our vision going forward, that a regional approach to meeting gaps in our service is uh, consistent with the fire department's vision and the needs of our community. Next slide, please. Probably the third biggest thing we did last year, uh, we were able to establish a cost recovery, um, fee schedule for the fire service. Uh, this is something that, uh, a great deal of fire municipal fire districts and even some rural fire districts are doing across New York State. Historically, Jamestown Fire Department is not for the cost of providing services. And again, it's not about trying to, to make it a revenue stream or to make it so, uh, we're you know, attempting to offset the cost of operating the department. It's more along the line of, uh, just trying to make the supplies and some of the other services that we provide a little bit more cost effective. As far as ambulance transport revenues go, again, it aligns with the same thing. It's going to provide that cushion, but it'll allow us to be able to recover some of the costs for the training that our personnel go through and for some of the medical supplies that are, uh, considered consumable or disposable in the provision of providing medical care. Our ambulance billing will be done through All-Star Ambulance. Um, our contract with All-Star allows for that. And we've decided as a group and you as a council to execute that portion of that. And they're currently working to get us set up to start recovering some of those revenues. Next slide, please. Going forward into 2021, um, one of our biggest thing will be to implement a new records management system. Uh, again, we want to make sure that we are compliant and we are up to date. A national fire incident reporting system that's done through the, uh, US Fire Administration. We're required to report to that. Uh, we want to ensure that whatever records management system we go to will continue to meet those national standards. We're also looking to go to a new, um, pre-hospital care reporting system for emergency medical calls. The standard that that is set in New York State is provided by the State Department of Health. Um, and they're moving to an all-digital platform to do that. So we're currently shopping around for some software to enable us to meet the New York State standard. One of the other major benefits to us with going to a records management system is that it'll be one platform. Um, and it'll eliminate this legacy paper system that we've had, uh, that really provides for a lot of redundant entry. Um, we write a lot of things three and four times in order to maintain our records as we're required to do to meet the standards. The more that we can put it on one platform, the better our accuracy will be. And it's really, guys, it's, it's a new world and it requires new methods. Your fire department is turning 110 years old this year. And there's an old saying in the fire service, we are, um, 100 years of tradition unimpeded by change. So change comes slowly in the fire service. But it is a new world for us, along with the rest, uh, of society. And we want to, we wish to move forward with some of those technological advances in order to make us much more efficient and, uh, obviously consume less time. So that makes us available to run, uh, more calls as we need it. Um, one of the other advantages with going to a better software system, beyond what we have now is it'll enable us to track our training more effectively, uh, which also helps us to meet standard. It'll also give us a platform for reporting our inspections that will be also linked with our fire data. Probably the other biggest benefit to it is that it's going to allow for us to, um, really put into place some, uh, controls to watch trends. Um, as we move forward as an organization, watching trends and looking at where our resources are most needed and on a time demand basis is becoming exceedingly important. And most software platforms on the market today are able to provide that kind of data for us in real time and we'll be able to have it right at our fingertips. And the whole goal out of all of this is to make sure that our firefighters and the citizens that we protect are as safe as possible. Zach, next slide, please. Um, our final large goal for this year, um, is to try to come up with a staff development program, uh, not just for all officers, I should say actually all members, uh, because we have a, a very vested interest in all of our personnel. They are our most valuable resource. And having a clear, uh, line of succession, but also some development planning, uh, would go a long way in assuring that your fire department will continue to operate, uh, for the next 110 years. As far as fire training goes, um, fire training, really, the better trained we are, the better it assists us with recruitment and retention. We continue to strive for the highest standards possible. And being a part of New York State, despite the fact that we're kind of so isolated in the southeast corner, having that connection to New York State through the Office of Fire Prevention and Control is a, a very large asset that we wish to leverage, uh, more so going forward in the future. Hopefully to get the OFPC to come down and provide classes to us, uh, in a more local setting versus trying to send people hours away to, to seek OFPC training. Uh, also, fire training allows us to meet NFPA standards. That's really what our, our benchmark is in the fire service in order to make sure that our staff is the most fully trained that they can be. Uh, both to meet requirements under the law and to make sure that they're operating as safely as possible. Uh, as far as fire investigation goes, um, we have a very talented team. Um, we wish to, uh, continue to fund that and have that move forward. Uh, we're looking possibly, uh, with the Juvenile Fire Center program. And they're developing that along a little bit further, uh, just gives us another tool in the toolbox, if you will, when it comes to doing fire investigations. Um, but all of our investigators do meet NFPA standards and they are pro board certified. And we do that in a partnership with the police department. It is a shared service. Um, as far as training for command staff goes, um, we're seeking to, uh, also have all of our chief officers become certified to fire officer two level, both to meet NFPA guidelines and they'll be pro board certified. And we really seek to develop their knowledge, skills and abilities, um, going forwards. Again, we want to set a good example as the command staff to make sure that there's succession planning in place. So the folks that are coming behind the current command staff are going to have the tools, the knowledge and the expertise in order to take on those additional roles and responsibilities. That all said, we're going to continue to keep maintaining our own in-house CMT certification program. We also do our in-house CPR program. That is not only the most cost-effective option for us, but all of your fire department has all been trained to the EMT basic level. Um, historically, we've never been able to have everybody be trained to that level. We do meet that standard today and we want to continue to do that in-house pro programming or to maintain those certifications and keep everybody at the cutting edge of the technology and what it takes to, uh, provide emergency medical care in the safest and most cost-efficient manner. So with all that said, uh, customer service is always our, uh, our highest goal. Uh, we seek to provide the best fire protection and the best emergency medical care that our citizens have come to expect and demand from their fire department. And we're very excited to, uh, try to keep everybody safe as we move forward into 2021.
Thank you, Matt. I appreciate it. Um, any questions for Matt or Tim before we do our last one, which is comptroller, which will move pretty quickly?
Real quick, Matt, um, do you think that the contract with All-Star and maybe the county coming in is gonna ideally decrease the need for the JFD to respond to EMS calls?
Uh, absolutely not. Uh, our calls are increasing at a rate of 10 to 15% per year. There's a lot of factors that go into that. But more than ever, I believe it points to the fact that the two-tiered response system and the fire department being involved in emergency medical care is more important now than it's ever been. And I fully expect, uh, Councilman Olson, that the demands for emergency medical care will, will continue to increase year over year for at least the next five.
A follow-up question, uh, to that, Chief. So even though All-Star may be responding or the fly car might be responding for advanced life support, you still send, uh, your firefighters for the EMS calls anyways. Is that correct? Or it's how it used to be?
That's correct, Councilman Russell. Yeah, Jamestown Fire Department still is a party to that two-tiered response model. Uh, yes, we're a, either a pumper or a medical fly car from City Hall will respond out to provide that emergency medical care. Generally, we can get on scene a little bit ahead of the, the transporting agency, whoever it is, and, uh, we can start to render that care. Just for the record, the benchmark for that is to be providing that care for minutes or less. And we meet that benchmark over 95% of the time.
I, I was going to say that I know there was numerous times during my career where, um, All-Star wasn't route. And I'll say that, let's say, for example, with a, with a drug overdose, uh, and I know officers are now carrying Narcan, so that, that obviously helps. But, uh, there were times where All-Star, um, or, um, JFD would get there a lot faster than All-Star and would be able to, uh, start administering aid to someone. And then sometimes they would turn it over when All-Star got there. So, um, I agree with you that that two-tiered system is is definitely needed for the citizens of Jamestown to, uh, provide, uh, that level of care.
How about fire, how about fire calls? What, how do you see your fire calls? Um, are they increasing, decreasing, staying steady versus the EMS calls?
As a matter of comparison, the fire calls did incrementally go up last year. We ran about 10 more fires than we did in 2019. Pretty consistent with state trends. I would expect that that number possibly will, will be pretty steady, probably within 10 either way. But definitely the medical calls, it would not be surprising to me to see that number grow by a factor of 15 to 20% again this year.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, we'll turn it over to the comptroller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For our, our finance office, some of the 2020 accomplishments here. Our first one is, uh, kind of delivering the COVID-19 restructuring plan. Um, all the credit here goes to Joe Bolito in, in leading this and the mayor and, and all of the department heads back in the spring when the pandemic started. We, we sat down and had meetings with, with each department and really they were able to identify, um, savings within, within their own department. And we saved $1.2 million. Um, the, the other thing that, that we've implemented this fall in the finance office is electronic invoice storage. Um, we've, um, worked closely, Linda Dalton on, on the accounts payable side has, uh, really, really, um, put in a new process to be able to save all of our invoices electronically, um, without adding additional time. Um, this is important because, you know, anytime other departments are asking for copies of invoices and, and checks, we're able to immediately, um, get them over to them instead of having to, um, get up and, and run over and, and, you know, take staples out and scan it in electronically. So it's, it's a proactive, uh, solution for us to, to be able to save time down the road. Um, whether it be again for grant reimbursements, um, other reconciliations and, and working with the auditors to, to give support, um, for, for purchases. Um, and then the, the third accomplishment that we have listed here is getting the tax bills online. Really, we've worked closely with the IT department and, and Mark Dean and Jen Williams, the clerk and, um, the mayor in getting this done, um, for, for our tax taxpayers here in 2021. It's, it's been a hu- huge success for us this year. It's, it's going to cut down on traffic and, and mail. And, 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 you know, manual entering of, uh, the, the tax payments. So, um, awesome accomplishment there. And then the next slide. Um, goals for 21, one thing we'd like to, to look at doing is online invoicing for our retirees that we are billing monthly for, for healthcare. Um, we have to offer online payments and then offer, um, automated electronic invoice delivery. Um, we spend a lot of time on this on a monthly basis and also, um, there's cost to it with, with postage. So it's something that we want, want to take a look at doing here, um, in 2021. Um, the other thing, second thing we want to take a look at is formal monthly financial reviews. Obviously, um, on a month-to-month basis, I'm, I'm always looking and, and reviewing, um, the, the financials, but I, I want to formalize this for 2021 and really work with each department head to make sure we're all on the same page and then just improve that communication. We, we've got a lot of new department heads. I'm new, the mayor is new. So we just want to, want to make sure, um, that, that we're all on the same page, uh, for, for this year. Um, and then the third thing is just continuing to, you know, move forward from an electronic transition standpoint and, and reducing any kind of pa- paper that, that we can in, in our office, um, whether it be, you know, looking at the payroll, uh, process, weekly, bi- weekly payroll, you know, journal entries and just continuing to, um, keep things stored electronically. Whether it was contracts, leases and that kind of thing. So. That's, that's pretty much it for us.
Thank you, Ryan. We'll see if there's any questions for the comptroller's office. All right, hearing done. Um, I appreciate it. Um, thank you to our three departments for, um, presenting that information. Um, I don't have anything further for you all tonight for public session. I do have one item for executive session, which is active litigation. Before you all vote to go in that, I'll just note, there's no action to be taken. Um, we will have Mr. Ramondo and Mr. Thompson joining us as well as our attorney, Kristen Mackler. Tony, I think you're muted.
I'm mute. Oh, there I am. Okay. I must've pushed the button. Uh, just a reminder that next week is a holiday, so our voting session will be two weeks from tonight. For the February voting session. So with that, do I have a motion to go into an executive session or, um, an active litigation?
It's the move.
It's the move by Councilwoman James. I have a second. Second by Councilman Sheldon. All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Hi.
Can you hear you, Tony?
Go ahead. I don't, I'm not muted, so I don't know what the.
All right, I'll go ahead and stop it. Uh, we do need to have, as All right, I'll go ahead and stop it. We do need to have, as noted, Mr. Ramondo, Mr. Thompson, if they could both stay on, the rest of our staff. Go for the night.
Nice.
Have a good night, everyone.